Next item, please.
Action items. Special consideration of an action item. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will excuse these from the motion below.
We do have a couple supplements to action item number seven and eight under HR. Mr. FYI.
I do have a question on number four. Just a quick question, not necessarily to take, to move it.
So you're saying you don't need to pull?
No, no, no need for pulling. And then also on the supplement, I think on the PR contract, I think with Bassett and Bassett, I have a question about that.
Want it pulled?
Just a question as well.
Yeah, the question is if you want anything pulled.
Let's have it pulled, so.
What action, what item is that?
Fifteen.
So fifteen, any others?
With the exception of fifteen, okay. All right. Motion to approve action items? At this ti- oops, wait a minute. Move that action items numbered one through sixteen be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of fifteen.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion support. I believe there's some questions. Dr. Trustee Mosib.
Yes, on number four, it says that we're awarding obviously company to do storage. I was just wondering, is this on premise or are we doing this on the cloud?
Mr. Patterson will come up.
It, that's on premise.
Okay.
It's hardware and software.
Great, thank you. That's all I needed to know.
Are there any other questions, comments? Any objections to the motion? Hearing none, please attach a unanimous roll call vote affirmative. Go ahead and read the summary now.
Okay. Nope, I've got it right here. With the exception of fifteen.
The exception of fifteen.
Okay. Summary of agenda action items. Approval, approval of warrants, approval of contract to Mystery Science, approval of Amazon purchase to support Makerspace Labs, approval of contract to Reliant Technologies, approval of contract to Digital Age Technologies, approval of contract to Train Supply, Inc., seven through 10, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12, number 11, approval of financial statement, number 12, approval of principal at Howard Elementary, number 13, approval of first budget revisions for 2019, 2020, per school board report, nineteen dash 106. Number 14, approval of policy updates, changes per board report, nineteen dash 107, and 16, approval of donations.
Dr. Malekow, you have a comment?
I'd like to call up. We have a new principal, Mervat Sabah. We can have her come to the podium and give her a big round of applause. Howard Elementary, just approved.
Good evening. I forget how fun these board meetings are. So first, I would like to start off by thanking the school board and Dr. Malekow for all your hard work and commitment to our great district. I'm honored and feel blessed to accept the position of principal at Howard School. I'm eager to join the team and look forward to serving the wonderful Howard community for many, many years to come. Personally, I'm a proud product of Dearborn Public Schools, and I'm definitely committed to the growth and vitality of our district as a whole and doing whatever it takes to reach students and putting students first. I'd like to also thank my children who are here today, who, by the way, also attend Dearborn Public Schools, who have been troopers back there in the back row, Hattie, Ryan, and Jenna, and my husband, my dad, and my sisters, and my entire family for being my support system and contributing so much to what I stand for here today. Thank you all again for this opportunity. I feel energized and excited to meet, work alongside, and develop deep and meaningful relationships with the Howard students, teachers, staff, parents, and community members at large for many years to come. Thank you.
Congratulations and best wishes to you. Let's go back to item number 15, please.
Okay, so on this contract.
Wait, she needs to read it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm ready to go home, I guess. It's been a long day.
Recommended action. It is recommended that the board approve the contract to Bassett and Bassett Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $100,000 for consulting services, which, with the, I'm sorry, with the final agreement reviewed by legal counsel and administration.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion support discussion now. Trustee Mosib.
Yes, thank you. So on this contract, obviously, we're putting it now at $100,000, but there is.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, and we're basing it on, on an hourly rate.
You know what? Just, let's have, yeah, Mr. Wall.
Will Mr. Wall come up?
Can you give us a background on this before we get to the question, please?
So as you are aware, we started looking at the bond issue going forward on the capital program starting December, and one of the things that we, we needed to get the feedback from the community and obviously build a consensus if we're going to go forward for the new one and all that. So we actually met with several consultants. We did a phone serve conference first with all of them, and then we actually met some of them in purpose, in person to look at how they, kind of talked to them about our, how we saw how it looked and what their viewpoints going forward would need to be done. And one of the aspects that we did agree upon is having a community survey. So we needed someone to do a community survey for us to make sure, you know, what is the true feelings out there, because obviously in a very close vote, you know, anything going forward could go the same or one way or the other. We want to make sure we build a consensus going forward. And once we have that community survey, how do we take what the community wants in that survey and develop a program that's going to merge with our capital improvement program going forward to make sure we're taking care of what the citizens deem important along with the Board of Education in the years to come? So we were looking for a consultant that would do both the survey aspect and work with us on our communication plan to get the message out to the community by having forums out there and actually having the consultant run the forums versus the district, because we want to make sure that people didn't think we're just trying to drive the message by the district, it's more from our, our survey results. So we met with several of them again and actually met up with them in person, got some proposals from two of them that we felt were most, that could do both the forum and the, and the survey, and actually had school districts experience, and that's where the final recommendation for Bannick and Bannick came from going forward.
And, and we also did some checking with fellow superintendents that have worked with them as well. So that's part of the, you know, checking, because we get the honest opinion when we talk to our fellow colleagues.
And so when the, when the, most of the, every one of the consultants say, we can't give you an actual absolute cost, because until they actually go through the process of getting the community portion and the going forums, it, it can go any which way. So we got an hourly basis based on personnel, and that's where I felt, I, I'm not going to give an open contract to anybody. So that's why we have a not to exceed amount, and also on a monthly basis, they'll give us their report of what hours they spend and what they spend on, so we can keep track as we go along and see how that process is going. And also, we have a clause that will have, be in the contract that will have an out clause at any time with 30 days notice to them, that will only pay them for up to what they have actually completed work on our project, and then we can terminate services if we think it's the best interest of this district.
So they'll be sending kind of invoices to the district every 30 days?
Every, every 30 days, correct.
So we can know what has been done in the 30 days and then?
Right, and I'll take those and summarize them, give you the copies most likely, and keep it in the board updates so the board's aware of how we're progressing toward this option.
And since this is kind of in, you know, a fluid situation, if the results of this essay, of these polls and of these surveys come to the board and then we feel like we don't want to move forward, then we can terminate that contract.
Correct. And the board has ultimate decision, what we go forward, because we have nothing on the ballot in the future at this point. And we want to make sure, we have to move quickly enough, so we don't miss the opportunities if the board wants to move quicker or not, but until we have the data and a recommendation of what that data means, we can't really move forward.
Can I add on that too? And that's why we discussed it a couple times with building in sight, is that we needed to move on it so that we don't take options off the table for the board. Not that we've decided anything, because it's a board decision, but we, we wanted to move this quickly. You know, we've been talking though for a few months. It's not like, you know, this has been going back to December, but now we're ready to move forward, and if we waited any longer, then it would potentially, let's just say the November election would be off the table. So that's why we kind of need to move on it now with some flexibility with Mr. Wall and our team, and then we don't know where it'll go. We'll bring back the survey, we then may have the community forums. We did feel our team, we have a core team that's meeting, that it was important that whatever group that we hired would, would not only be on the surveying, the data collection, but would also run the community forums and the information campaign, because it makes sense for them to have all the data. And again, I've talked to one of my fellow colleague superintendent, a couple actually, that were very pleased, so that's kind of why we're taking it to you now, and I think going back to the November election, it was the one that I missed when I was in Washington, when there were ideas, well, what should we do? And at that time, we said, you know what, we really feel like we going with a consultant. We didn't know what consultant at the time, but to move forward and try to regroup, because eventually, as you're all aware, Trustee McDonald just said it early, and I know you all know this, that eventually we do need to go back for a bond whenever, or exactly whatever that plan may be. I don't think there's any question, or there's little out there, at least from all of us,
In the future at some point.
That we need to, you know, at some point we do. And so that's why we're coming for you now. And I told Mr. Wall to make sure that we'll give you updates and board briefs, and we'll also make sure that if we, as we start, like we did last time, we would do either under my commentary or a special report, you'd have a public report out every month at this meeting as well.
Okay, because we have a lot of the student demographics, what our building needs are. We really want to have that community piece to say where are they comfortable at, and that's where the, as professionals that do surveys, especially for school districts, they'll, they'll get a good understanding where the community is, with a good, small factor either way, to give us an idea of what they're thinking, so we can put something on the table that people will build a consensus around.
That's great. It started at the November meeting, when we as a board spoke and asked for, for a consultant to come in and help us, we want to do our next campaign, we want to do better messaging. In order to have a good message, you have to find the data, and this is the only way. Yes, you're going to have to spend some money to collect good data.
And we've been getting mixed information too, so we need to.
Let the professionals do this.
Yeah, yes, we need the professionals to.
Are there any other comments or questions, Mr. Wall?
One last question. Obviously, you said we had two vendors that were kind of, that met all of the requirements. What made us choose this contract?
One had more experience with school districts recently, and for example, that one in Rochester recently went for a bond issue that had an anti-tax group out there also working with them. They were able to build that consensus and actually get the bond passed. So that's very similar to our situation, that hopefully they'll have some recent experience, because as you're aware, with our recent bond issue, the formatting and the process has kind of evolved to more social media, and that's something that you got to have good experience on, because whether it's true or not on social media, it's something you still have to deal with as part of the informational side of any campaign.
Trustee Mosib, I also want to go on the record, we spoke earlier, and anytime in this contract, after we do this, the polling and the survey, we will be getting a monthly expense, monthly invoice, and anytime we choose to put the brakes on this contract, the contingencies will be in this contract, just so you know.
Yep, I'm glad that's the case.
Yeah.
So thank you for.
There was, it was a good building site meeting, Trustee Petrikov and Trustee Thorpe and I, and Tom presented this to us, and we had those hard discussions.
Yeah, we were careful with what we wanted to move forward with. I don't think we, we are ever comfortable with a contract that we can't get out of.
Yeah, yeah.
And Dr. Malekow, I set up a core committee at the district level, you know, with several different people, so it's not just me running, it's a committee that's actually looking at this information and making decisions.
Yeah. Did we need a roll call vote?
Since we pulled it, but we don't need it.
No, we don't need a roll call.
I'm asking if you wanted a roll call vote. Okay, there's a motion and support. Are there any objections? Hearing none, please attach affirmative vote. unanimous affirmative vote. Next item, please. That's page 12, number eight.
Please, thank you. A discussion item. Policy updates, policy 8330, student records. Dr. Malekow and Ms. Mason Ali-Bazil.
Good evening. So for the discussion, policy 8330 was student records. The changes were very straightforward. They were just to update the policy to align with the current law. They hadn't been updated in quite some time, and so the changes really just align with the law, which would supersede any policy anyhow. Good. Sorry?
Any questions?
You've got 24 minutes. No, I'm just kidding.
Let's try to wrap this up before someone else gets back.
I was like, I love that, said that, so what are you doing right there?
Nothing's changed.
He's practicing.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item, please.
Board of education business, acknowledgement of correspondence.
I guess we all have at our table an invitation, it looks like to.
25-plus club.
Retirement, yeah. Dinner.
Any others? All right, next item, please.
Board member committee and organization reports.
I'll go first, since we were just touching upon it. We had a building in sight last week. We knew that we were going to need a little added time, so the conversation did revolve around, first off, what we were going to do moving forward with our infrastructure needs and a potential new bond proposal. First, we looked at all of the funding sources that could be potentially tapped besides the traditional millage proposals. So we, we looked at everything from resolution bonds to non-qualified bonds to sinking funds to shared saving energy bonds and annual state aid and, and any other sources of, you know, gifts and whatever from community members. And we had a conversation about how much each of these types of situations could generate revenue. Some couldn't revenue, generate a small increments of revenue that we could potentially use without going to the voters in order to tide us over while we develop a, a larger proposal moving forward, such as a sinking bond, if we needed to tap into some kind of emergency funds for, for some of the situations we might encounter. So that was a lot of our conversation. One of the things the community needs to be aware of is, is that any ballot proposal requires us to have a formulated plan. We need to take it to the state. The state needs to approve it before it ever shows up on a ballot. So the next opportunity where we could even begin to look at putting something on the November ballot, we'd have to have something ready to go in July, and the state would need to approve it by August, so that we could have it on a November ballot. That gives us, once again, that tight window, very tight window, because we're already into March, and we haven't even done a survey. So the potential, I know there's a lot of rumors out there that they're going to see something in November, but the, the logistics and reality of it is, is very, it would be a real tight squeeze in order for us to have something ready to go, and we'd once again be confronted with that very short timeframe of, of messaging, because by the time August comes, which is, was the complaint last time, you know, people said it was too, too small a window, well, that's how the state works the program. They give us a certain amount of time to put it out there, they approve it, we only have a short time before the election. So that's where we were at with that conversation, and we discussed the consulting firms and the reasoning behind who we chose. So that is, but there is a timeframe that was shared with us of how it could look if we wanted to try to go for the November election date. The only problem is, is that this didn't include at that time, the time that they're going to have to allow for doing a survey, and that could be five or six weeks, once they're hired, to even get the survey out there returned and tabulated. So the timeframe that they used, which was tight as it was, didn't include that. And then the other thing we discussed, which we just voted on, was about the new security systems for all of the buildings that, for, they had the new clocks that are the scrolling information systems that are going to replace the outdated, I, I basically non-functional televisions that are in the buildings that were put there 15 years ago. So that was the other part of our conversation. And that's it for me.
Any other reports?
Yes, the superintendent's evaluation committee also met prior to this meeting, and a couple of things that we discussed, there had been talk about having a 360 evaluation this year. The time strengths are a little, are not really conducive to doing that and doing it thoroughly, so what the committee has decided we'd like to do is, we are going to have, you know, information from surveys and things, so there will be that information developed to put into our evaluation. But we hope to, a lot of times when this, when the evaluation is done, this committee's work is basically done, but what we would like to do is continue to meet and make sure that we have a process in place and a background set up to help whoever is on the next committee, whether it's some of us or none of us, continue with the work, so we can get them a good foundation, so there can be a 360 next year that is done well. But some of the things that we've decided to do are, the plan is, we will meet prior to next board meeting as an entire board in a closed session, and at that point, we will share with you the information. Glenn will have his artifacts and everything together by them, and we will also give the tool, the MS, MSBA tool is the tool that we use. We'll give that and we'll have a conversation on where we're going from there and basically set up what we need to do and help you with the information, give you the information so that you can start working on your evaluation of the superintendent. We also plan on meeting then, well, let's see, we would like, at that point, that would be, when is the next meeting? April 13th. We would like you to have that information completed and back to me by the end of the month, by the end of April, so that gives you more than two weeks to get it done.
To do the actual evaluation.
Do the actual evaluation. And then at that point, we do plan on meeting, also having a full meeting of the board in closed session during the May meeting, and at that point, we would also like to invite Dr. Malekow in on that session, where we will discuss with him what the.
Results.
What the results were.
Is there, is there a deadline date for when this should be all finished?
It has to be completed before June 20th.
Okay, is that the, in your contract?
Yes, yeah.
That's according to the contract.
Yes.
You said June 20th?
Isn't it, I mean, June 30th, isn't that correct?
Yeah, and it's aligned with state law too.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's a state law, yeah.
Policy committee also met before this meeting, and we discussed various policies. Obviously, the one that Ms. Bazil just mentioned, the policy about student records. We also discussed that length of the filling of vacancy, and we discussed the options that were discussed last year. We talked about some ideas that we can float around, and we would like to go even at.
Some new ideas.
Yeah. And to run, also run it by legal as well, to make sure that it is compliant with state law. So hopefully, the entire board will be briefed with it next meeting. And then we went and talked about and discussed some outdated, probable outdated security policies that we'd like to also update as well, so that will be on the agenda for next meeting as well. So it was a lively discussion on the filling of vacancy.
Looking forward to hear all about it.
And, and I also ask to be moved forward on the agenda too, since we had the.
Yes.
Very timely building facilities use, that was a very short notice for, and, and thank you to the staff of Salina for being ready, and, and the Dearborn Police Department for managing a, a very short notification for a event that I'm sure everybody in Dearborn is well aware of now, but we were a little concerned about the use of our resources in that short of a timeframe, and, and we want to look at that, that policy as well, and we might want to reconfigure how the application process timeframe is laid out and, and other options to help our schools not be put under that kind of pressure, if, if at all possible.
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Lane?
I'd like to report for the committee, one of the directors of the liaison, that is the Dearborn Education Foundation.
Please.
The town is very successful, hard to draw a event, and I'm pretty sure that they've raised quite a bit of money, but in addition to that, they're asking that we promote scholarships. There are 14 scholarships listed on the website, Dearborn Education Foundation, and they include scholarships for skilled trades, culinaries, scholarships named in honor of persons, but for, for your higher education, et cetera, that type of thing. So I would ask any seniors to go and look at that, and then any high school personnel to mention it to seniors, but I did meet, and we will be meeting again, we meet monthly. As far as the city relations committee, I would like to just mention the topics, and then it might be easier for everyone to have Mary or Roxanne report on these, since they're there in person. But we discussed traffic, elections, and the bond, of course, which has been mentioned, security at the schools, as well as the security study at the college, coronavirus and planning for any outbreak of Corona, the census, of course, which has been mentioned, and the schools coordinating with the census, promoting it as much as possible, upcoming renovations to our facilities, including charging for room use. We discussed that at some length, which is done routinely. And then two other things, the city master plan, which any citizen can comment on and is encouraged to comment on, and then the college's radio station use for broadcast in emergencies. So if Mary and Roxanne want to clarify any of those issues, that might be easier for you.
I say read the minutes. Yeah, I, I, Mary, you did, you did very well in touching upon all the topics. We, we also learned that the Henry Ford Centennial Library will be having their grand opening. Fingers crossed, according to Director Mary Ann Bardot, that it will be at the end of April, when they also do the wrap up. No, no promises at all. You know how construction goes. I did attend the big read on, over the weekend for Lab Girl at Greenfield Village, because they couldn't use the library, and she did say that she's hoping that when they have a month-long program, and when that ends at the end of April, she would like to be able to have the, the going away party, so to speak, at Henry Ford Centennial Library, but it may run into, depending on tying up some loose construction pieces in the first week of, first or second week of May, but they are looking forward to that as well. The city thanks us for the partnership of working with them. They, I will say that the city is also, one other thing they're looking at, and they're doing a survey of their own again, is a indoor soccer facility. And they are looking at, my understanding, and this is something that I have no firsthand knowledge of, but one way that they can help fund that, instead of using taxpayer dollars, they are, there's an alternate route, but they would need the school district to partner with them as a recreational facility in some fashion for some kind of grant, I believe, or something. So we may be hearing more about that as well, and it would be more than just an indoor soccer facilities. My understanding is that they're looking at it as a multi-complex facility like they have out in Canton and Novi and those places. So that's another thing that was one of the topics, or we, we may be joining in more conversation with. Yeah, Trustee me.
Is the college participating in this indoor soccer thing?
Well, we were, yeah, this is just in its, they've, they've explored this in the past and didn't feel that they had the backing of the community financially, so they're doing it again, they're taking another look at it. So I, I think they'd be happy to have whatever partnerships they can utilize.
But I don't think that was specifically mentioned.
But it wasn't, no, no. There, there, none of it, it's just in its infancy at this point.
So you just committed to the college?
No, I committed nobody to anything.
You should have seen. You should have seen.
It's just, but if you, if, what?
He was at the meeting.
But he came in late, so he probably figures he missed something that I promised.
Did you have any to add to the report?
No, except it was a really good meeting, and I liked the-
I think it's in our reports, right?
Yeah.
Okay, next item, please.
Yeah, because we've only got a-
Uh, board members superintendent commentary.
Dr. Maleko?
Just wanted to mention the date, and trustee Thorpe, the green tie is June 2nd this year for the Education Foundation.
And that's part of what trustee Lane was speaking about with the scholarships.
Yeah.
Trustee McDonald?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I also attended the big read with Lab Girl this weekend. What a great event. And there were other members of the community that attended, and it was well, well-done. And it looks like a really good book. And I also want to just remind everybody, don't forget to vote tomorrow. Let your voice be heard.
Trustee Thorpe?
Before we meet again, we will go through spring break for our P-12 students and their families. We will always say be safe, but it takes on additional meaning this year based on the coronavirus. There is a good chance that people are gonna be going into areas that are experiencing it much more acutely than we currently are. So please, be safe. Take every precaution you can.
Wash your hands.
Wash your hands.
Wash your hands.
Trustee Moser?
Yeah, I attended the chess tournament at Howard, and man, that was really amazing. Omar and with his team from Gear Park competed as well. And I think it went even on, because Gear Park, it was their first year, so they didn't make it to the district championship. But hopefully, next year.
You have to start somewhere.
Yeah, absolutely. So I know other parents ask, why not, when I posted this on social media, why not our school? Well, it's a kind of a parent and teacher also, and students' interest-driven. So if there are students who are interested in forming such a club and competing, the tournament is there and open. So talk to your principal and talk to your teachers and see who would volunteer, because it's a nice sport. It makes the students think. And it's an amazing sport that students compete with, especially at the elementary level. I wanted to also, obviously, March reading month, looking forward to reading. I know we, the board, received some invitations from some schools, and I will try my best to attend many, or answer to some of, many of the invites. But we have a lot of schools to attend to. So I apologize if I can't make it to your school. Election Day is tomorrow, and I believe our schools are open and some are precinct locations. And we're, I'm glad that we're doing a lot of things as far as security for, to making sure that everything goes well, and that also the educational process is not interrupted with people just walking in and voting. At the same time, I encourage everybody to go out and vote. This is a primary. It's very crucial for everybody to make their voice heard, as trustee McDonald said. And our country is definitely at crossroads. So I would encourage everybody to go out and vote. The precincts will be open. If you registered before, I think, February 24th, then you would have to go to the city hall and vote. And since 2018, ballot initiative changed the rules as far as voting. If you, you can even register tomorrow to vote and vote on the same day, if you have never registered before. You can go to-
You have to do that at the city clerk's office.
Right, at the city clerk, if you did that recently. You can go to michigan.gov/vote to know where your precinct location is, if you recently moved. And the last thing that I also wanted to mention, to what trustee Lane and trustee Thorpe mentioned about scholarships, March and April are usually most of the deadlines for scholarships. So again, to remind high school students, especially graduating and parents, that this is the time to commit, especially during the spring break. If you're not traveling due to coronavirus, stay home and apply for scholarships, because many of them are due in the month of April. So those are the things that I had.
I want to add one more quick thing that you reminded me of, trustee Moser. I had spoken with some of the chess clubs in the area, and some of them are desperate for chess boards. So if you have any old chess boards laying around, your kids have moved out, you don't play anymore, anything like that, I know there's always a need for those. So keep that in mind for donations. Requests for information and/or future agenda-
Wait, wait, wait. Ha, who's that?
Oh, did you have your head up? We didn't see it.
May I comment also on voting?
Go right ahead, trustee Lane.
Okay, two things quickly. First of all, my son and I both are able to experience Michigan's new absentee voting. I was very satisfied. It was very easy to do. And I would encourage anyone, even if, as trustee Moser said, even if you find out last minute that you're going to be unavailable, you don't even need an excuse. It's easy to do. Unfortunately, my son didn't have as good of an experience. He had difficulties getting his ballot returned. So, but generally speaking, it's much improved. And I would encourage everyone to vote tomorrow, even if they have to register tomorrow. It's very important, and I would like to say this. I think as we, all of us as citizens of this country, need to think about healthcare now, and whether that's a human right, not only to an individual, but whether as a society, we need to have everyone in our country covered for public health reasons. There is no better example of that than the coronavirus, and how anyone being uncovered can be very, very problematic for all the rest of us who are covered. If we don't feel that people should have human rights of healthcare, we really need to think about it just as a precaution to ourselves. So I would ask people to think about that when they're voting, not only tomorrow, but in the future as well. So I would, I would ask everyone to vote, and I know that everyone will do their utmost to do so. Thanks.
At this moment, the chair will attend a motion to extend the meeting 15 minutes.
Support. Fifteen, not ten?
Ten.
We're not gonna be here.
So move.
Do we have the motion?
Support.
Do we have a motion to support our roll call vote?
Mary Lane?
Yeah.
It's probably you, Mary.
Roxanne McDonald, yes. Michael Mead? Adam Moser?
Yes.
Mary Petrikov?
Yes.
James Thorpe?
Yes.
President Barry?
Yes. Unanimous yes. Next item, please.
It is request for future, request for information and our future items.
Are you serious? I should not, okay. Next item, please.
Future meeting dates. Monday, March 16th, 2020, HFC meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service and Conference Center, Henry Ford College in the Rosenau Boardroom. Monday, April 13th, 2020, P-12 Board of Education meeting, 7:00. Oh, it's not in here. Oh, yeah, the 6 o'clock. We will also be having a 6:00 PM meeting for all board members. It is closed session to discuss evaluations. And that will be on April 13th at 6:00 PM in the superintendent's conference room, I'm assuming?
Correct.
Okay. Monday, April 13th, P-12 meeting, Board of Education, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, April 20th, 2020, HFC meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service and Conference Center, Henry Ford College in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Hearing no objections, we adjourn.